Hello, everyone. Thanks for coming today. We'd like to apologize to everyone, those online and in person. We had a camera failure right before we were getting ready to start. So those that are making public comment today, get a nice up close and personal camera view. So it's not that they're thrilled about it, but we want to make sure everyone can hear clearly and see who's speaking. If you could, please limit your comments to five minutes initially. Then we will, of course, call you back. There'll be an opportunity as the, as the meeting goes on to call people back up so that they can make additional comments. I'll try to give you a one-minute warning beforehand. Or I'll do my best to do that. Sometimes I get so involved in the comments, I might have to, might forget. But just a little bit of housekeeping. The Open Meetings Act is posted against the wall over there. So if you have any questions about that, it is posted and available. Also, please turn your cell phones to silent, as I just had to do, remind myself. And again, please, when you come up to make a comment, please introduce yourself and the organization you're with. Anything else, ladies? What's, well, yeah, we can introduce the staff from NIFA and DED. DED staff, would you like to introduce yourself?
I'm Kristina Zink. I'm the Housing Program Manager for Disaster Recovery.
My name's Mackenzie Martin-Waldron. I'm the Disaster Recovery Manager for Disaster Recovery.
I'm Susan Nifferson, Director of Urban Coordinator and Outreach.
Okay, and then I'm Sarah Tacota with NIFA, the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Allocation Manager.
I'm Camilla Ottawa, the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Assistant Allocation Manager.
And Robin Ambrose, Deputy Director of Programs and Marketing here at NIFA.
Okay, with that, we will go ahead and get started. Mr. Lenz, you are up first. Thank you. Somebody has to go first. We appreciate you volunteering.
Thank you for the opportunity to come back for a second version of our comments. My name is Chris Lenz. I'm Development Director for Excel Development Group for the state of Nebraska. Excel's developed project low-income housing tax credits for over 25 years in the state. I want to quick make general observations on some of the unexpected changes that occurred. And then we'll direct my comments towards more specific categories. In the almost 20 years that I've been working with NIFA, I have never once heard an NIFA Executive Director, Board Member, Program Manager, or a member in the public ask the following question: Why did we fund a tax credit project in a rural community with no hospital, no grocery store, no daycare center, or pharmacy within a mile and a half of this development? Nor have I ever heard the question, why is this project being built in an area of town with no recently constructed homes in the neighborhood? I understand and appreciate the need to develop projects in rural communities. However, you're adding point categories that are contradicting and essentially neutralizing existing selections in the application. And you're overlooking other categories already in place that drive site selection. For example, in the last three years and for the next two years, we have been and will be directed to develop projects in presidential disaster declaration areas. In all honesty, this is where developers typically begin the process to select communities because they're the broadest points available. If a community, regardless of population, is not located in any of these specific counties or cities, they have been and will be passed over again for a project. Adding points for being near a subdivision or close to a senior center will not trump those points. The next broadest section that drives community selection are the two Economic Development Certified and Leadership Community Points. These points are directing developers to communities that have earned that designation. And when combined with the disaster points, narrow down that list of vile communities that a developer will look at. These four to five points will never be left on a table by a developer. Comments regarding new point categories, development of housing in Greater Nebraska, the section and the associated two points do not enhance the lives or well-being of the tenants, nor do they add anything of value to a project and have nothing to do with community selection or project location. These points are directed towards individual developers only and should be removed from consideration. If you're not going to remove them, then please be more specific to the definition of materially participating in the last 12 months. Does participation mean securing financing, providing guarantees, managing construction, and property management? Does the clock start ticking on the receipt of a building permit, construction start date, certificate of occupancy, place and service date? Why arbitrarily 12 months? Maybe expand this timeframe to 24, 36 months, given the current construction environment. Leverage and collaboration. Please clarify the non-eligible resources specifically from NIFA and the DED funding sources. Are you eliminating any and all programs managed by DED, regardless of the source of funds, federal or state? Also, please clarify land from unrelated party is an eligible resource. Is that distinction between a landowner, developer, or applicant, no matter what the corporate structure or members of any of those entities are? Proximity to services. As I mentioned previously, I've never heard an issue with projects being funded in rural communities without basic amenities and services within a reasonable distance. By adding these points, you're again limiting which rural communities will be considered for an application. Most rural communities, the only available land is on the outer edges of town and not within your distance requirements. Why the arbitrary distance of one and a half miles? What is determining how far is too far? In the rural town of 3,000 that I and other developers live in, I can drive three miles in three minutes. In contrast, it takes me 15 minutes to drive three miles in Omaha, Arlington. If proximity to services is so important for residents and tax credit properties, why is this requirement non-metro only? It's one mile too far to go to the library or the park. It's two miles too far to go to the grocery store, take your kids to school or daycare, or play cards at the senior center. Would it make sense just to leave these rural communities to make sure the rural communities have the necessary services available with no distance requirement, continue to rely on developers to make the best decisions? Section is not necessary. There have been no issues in the past regarding location of services. Development in conjunction with non-Lite Tech proper opportunities, new categories, once again, limiting where Lite Tech developments will occur and not increasing the number of potential new rural communities. By incentivizing developers to build Lite Tech properties, projects in the same neighborhood as new market rate units, you are eliminating a vast majority of the rural communities who have not built a new subdivision in the last 12 months. This point option will drive development towards larger rural communities. In essence, you're making the comparison of development locations between Omaha and Lincoln to say order minded. It's not reasonable to assume that new market rate housing developments occurring at the same pace in orders St. Paul as it is in Grand Island, Carney, or Fremont.
Press your time.
I got like one more paragraph.
I tried to stretch it.
Thank you. Rob Woodland, Foundation's Development. The first point I want to bring up was about the developments in conjunction with non-LHCC Housing Opportunities Section. I feel that this is going to be very problematic to document. When I go to a city and say, hey, is that house being built going to be rented or is it going to be sold to an owner? How is the city going to know that? They have no way of knowing unless that community has a rental permit. But even if they do, they're probably not going to apply for it until after the building is done. So I don't see how a city can document what's being asked in that section. Also, if that section's going to stay, I would also clarify, ask you to clarify the total number of six units. Is that six units of homeownership, six and six units of rental? Or is it six total? Can it be five and one? Can it be three? Does that have to be three and three? Also, what's to keep someone from saying, yeah, that's going to be a rental house and then turn around and sell it to an owner? That's going to be maybe a third party that's not the developer. How, how is that done? I mean, it's, am I going to be penalized for a home builder deciding not to run a house and selling it to somebody? So find that problematic. Under leverage and collaboration, I think there's a couple contradictory statements in that section. One, it says that a capital contribution is listed as eligible resource. But also in the preamble above that, it says that any funds are excluded from a development partner. So if you put money into a project as a capital contribution, you're an owner. You're a development partner, you're a partner in that development. How is it possible to make a capital contribution not violate that, that piece? Also, in that section, TIF is listed as an eligible resource, but loans are not. Tiffs are collateralized by loans. You don't, the city doesn't write you a check. You borrow money from the bank based upon the TIF proceeds and flow of the TIF. So that's kind of contradictory and I think needs to be clarified as if loans are eligible or not through TIF. Also, the last point of leveraging collaboration is these partnerships, the tax rate partnerships are for-profit partnerships. If that's what unlocks the tax credits, nonprofits don't use tax credits. It's the for-profit partners that utilize the tax credits. And so these partnerships have to be for-profit. Well, if, if you're saying grants, grants are an eligible item, that's going to severely impact the pricing of the tax credits because the investors look at this as a flow of tax benefits. Now, all of a sudden, if we're saying, hey, investor, you have to take an income hit from a grant, and we're not going to give you any cash to pay for that. What they're going to do is they're going to lower their upfront contribution significantly to cover that tax hit they're going to take in your, and also with the time value of money. That's going to be in year one. So they're going to have a tax hit before they get any tax credits. And so it's going to impact the pricing of these credits in the state. So those are my comments.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Kathy Messner.
That took away from my time. I haven't said start yet, don't be worried. All right. Good morning. I'm Kathy Messner from Messner Development Company. I'm going to bounce around a little bit, but excuse me for that. I can see that you want to promote housing in outstate Nebraska. There's a simple way to do that. Put more credits in the non-metro set aside. You know, the QAP says that we have an equal amount between metro and non-metro. We really don't. Most of the crane credits go to metro areas. So if the simplest way to promote more housing in non-metro areas is to put more credits into that set aside. I want to address development of housing in Greater Nebraska. Particularly, you want to incentivize it in towns of 15,000 or less. That's not a bad idea, but your metrics are all off. We currently have almost 30 units of workforce housing going into communities of, into four communities of less than 15,000 population. But we don't have 10 units going into any one of those. The risk in small communities is too great. So you spread out your risk and you do five here and six someplace else. And so that number in one town, it's too much. It ought to be an accumulated total. I agree with Chris that the one year is not appropriate because everything else that we don't work on is in at least two-year cycles. And finally, I think you've left out a really important program that will help you do this. And that is, you've looked solely at the 150% of AMI designation as being an eligible home for rent or sales in that category. But the Rural Workforce Housing Program does not designate an AMI level. It targets affordable homes built in non-metro areas. It is a fully collaborative program. But its affordability is based on general workforce for the community and by limiting the cost of the housing for both homes you're selling and homes that you're renting. And that specific program should be included in that category if you decide to keep it. Quickly, you added a point for developers who haven't asked for extra credits in the last 24 months. That's an insult in this environment. And this, and this is the worst possible time you could have decided to put that provision in. Under collaboration and leverage and threshold scoring, I'm going to put that all together. Branches reduce eligible basis, so emphasizing branch doesn't make any sense. The TIF proceeds, that is a loan mechanism. And my greater, my greater point under this one is all of the things like zoning, subdivision work variances, paving, infrastructure, TIF, LB840, those are all things that we collaborate with our communities on. But they were all things that were originally a part of the scoring that we received in the threshold mechanism. So it looks to me like we've decided not to score threshold items and then selectively thrown it back into this kind of a category. Again, that doesn't make any sense. Leave the scoring in for the threshold categories, and you'll get at the same, the same kinds of things. Non-metro development in conjunction with non-metro LIHTC housing. We build mixed income subdivisions all the time, but you're putting the cart before the horse in saying you have to have an approved subdivision plat. All of that takes time and money to put in place. And it's all dependent on knowing what kind of housing you're going to build. You have to know what size lots you're going to have. And you have to know how the infrastructure is going to connect into those lots. And so there's no way to get an approved final plat with a mixed income subdivision without knowing first whether you're going to get the award for tax credits. So, and I'm not so sure you don't get it the same thing when you're talking about the market rate units within a tax credit project. So I just think that that one is, that one, you need to redo your, your measurement on and how you evaluate that. Okay.
Do you have anything?
Oh, yeah.
My name is Fred Hoppy, and I'm with Hoppy Development. I first of all reiterate some of the comments that have been made by the other developers. We submitted a letter, and I would like that recognized in the record. So that would be in place. But I want to emphasize a couple things. One of the concerns I have is it doesn't appear that NIFA really understands how long and how difficult putting together subdivisions are, putting together projects are, and putting housing into a community, small or large. And nor do they understand the capital stack, the amount of capital that has to be devoted to those kinds of things in the process by any developer. And what I'm saying by that is, if you look today at your concept of 10 units, building 10 units market in a neighborhood, to do that on a spec basis costs about a million and a half bucks. Anyhow, well, that's, you're taking that out of your, your, essentially out of a company's net worth until it gets sold and matriculated. So, you know, some of the metrics you're using, the concepts I firmly believe in, and we do. But the way the points are scored and identified and written up as value to get points are really hard to get involved. So it would seem to me that, rephrasing some of those, if the goal is to be building market rate units in, in conjunction with a low-income housing tax credit project, first of all, NIFA has to recognize by the way you fund those things and by the way you own those projects, it doesn't work to have the market rate in the LIHTC project very well, particularly with bond deals. It's incredibly difficult to get market rate under the same ownership as the LIHTC. So we would have to have a, some kind of a bifurcated ownership, and it's very complex under your, under the plan. Second, I think it's unfair to have bonus points or essentially bonus points or negative points for other developers to try and skew some things that are done, that have been done in the past. And I think Kathy kind of hit on when, if, if the issue is, you know, in these tough times, don't penalize us for taking advantage of or having problems with our pricing in the last couple of years. It just, it was all over the marketplace. So maybe that negates the point anyway. But the way that section's phrased, if you couldn't get a tax credit award in the past, you get a benefit under this, this QAP. Well, that's not right. If what you want to do is reward the people that hit their numbers correctly, make that a future thing. So we know when we're going in to ask for more credits and not ask for more credits, that it'll, it'll affect us. Same with implementing neighborhoods in 12 months. You know, you're essentially given a point for something that somebody's done in the past, and they didn't know it was a benefit. So, I mean, that's not right. Say, if you put it in the QAP, say, in two years, we're going to do that. So then, if we want to get that point, we can build six market homes or 10 market homes or whatever in conjunction with our LIHTC project. I'm guessing you're trying to tell me my time's up.
You, you've got three seconds.
Well, are you?
It's okay. They'll invite you back. So we'll give you another opportunity. Hey, Mark, Anthony?
I'm going to stand down and not talk. I was told to sign that.
Oh.
I would care to learn.
Hey, you're fine.
Popular speaker. Well done. Because of that.
Okay, Mr. Garcia.
Good morning. Cesar Garcia, Executive Director of Canopy South, an nonprofit organization working on the revitalization of neighborhoods in South Omaha. So Canopy South, along with the City of Omaha, Omaha's not 30, has been the recipient of the Choice Neighborhood Implementation Planning Grant. We're in the, in the middle of that, and we're looking into the opportunity to apply in the future what is the Choice Neighborhood Implementation Grant will be when all is said and done, perhaps the largest redevelopment in the state of Nebraska ever happened. And Canopy South also follows the Purpose Build Community model. And as a member, we have had the opportunity to experience firsthand all the great value that brings to community the mixed income housing approach. And no, we talk a lot about numbers here. We talk about where the grades go. But sometimes we forget to talk about the human aspect and what we're trying to solve here. And what is it to make it not only better lives for the rest of you but a sustainable approach? And that's what mixed income housing does, you know, creating communities, socioeconomic development, and networks that provides and creates support for those in perhaps the lowest area of income. So we are very pleased to see that some of those things have been approached now in the draft of the QAP. At the same time, we believe that it's important to extend that to market rate, mixed market rate. I can know in good faith, say that we will not be doing a good job if we are, I mean, that we'll be doing a good job if we don't come with the support from NIFA and all the great opportunities that we have with all the potential funding that would be needed for the project that we're doing. I want to encourage not only considering, or also considering the transit corridors. You know, when we're talking about cities like Omaha in particular, you know, and we're working very closely with the City of Omaha, with the Omaha Chamber in what it is, a holistic transportation approach. It is important for us to be acting in cohesively and consider those transit corridors as essential for making sure that we create accessibility for the population, the people that live in the distressed areas. So thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm very pleased to see some of the, in the draft for the mixed income housing. I would think that is, we can go a few steps forward and also continue working with the transit and continue working with the mixed rate market. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi. I'm Amanda Brewer, and I'm honored to serve as CEO of Habitat for Humanity of Omaha. We serve five counties, including Douglas and Sarpy. I'm here today to specifically provide input regarding the allocation of CD, BG, DR funds. And that's part of this meeting, isn't it? Am I correct? Okay. Habitat has been involved in flood response and flood recovery since the early days. We were the boots on the ground, working directly with people who are hurting, people in need, people who have lost everything. In addition to providing volunteers, we manned a call center. We worked hand-in-hand with FEMA. We spoke with people directly, providing supplies, doing debris removal. And in addition, we provided volunteers, leadership, and we leveraged our relationship with Team Rubicon. We have completed dozens of home repairs in the King Lake area in Western Douglas County. And we have been preparing flood victims to become mortgage-ready and have been able to provide homeownership opportunities already to several of these families. Habitat was pleased that housing was cited as a big issue and was included in the CD BG DR allocation. We have been preparing for the deployment of these funds by getting folks mortgage-ready, and we have identified property which would create 75 single-family homes in Bellevue, which is very near where much of the people who lost their homes near the point of disaster. We have been involved and provided input on CD BG DR hedge funds from the beginning. We've attended every meeting, every informational meeting, and provided public comment along the way. We were very surprised to learn just this week through email communication with both NIFA and the DED, which has not publicized, that all of the funds for housing creation would be going to the that all of the funds for housing creation would be going to the light tech pool. And only if funds are available would there be, uh, an opportunity for creation of single family homeownership units. Brought along, uh, the graph that was included in the proposal to HUD. And a big portion of it was to stay at the DED for construction and rehabilitation of homes. With some included in light tech. So again, we were very surprised to learn this. I testify in state request that half the funds be withheld from the light tech pool and be available for single family homeownership. I have four points which support this request. One, according to the study conducted by Development Strategies and commissioned by philanthropists, Metro Omaha has a current shortage of 78,000 units with a projected demand of 85 to 100,000 units by 2040. Two thirds of this demand in the affordable and workforce housing income ranges was identified as needing to be homeownership versus one third rental. Second reason I'm making this request. Uh, this study was completed in 2019, prior to the skyrocketing prices of housing in our market. Homes that went sold for 140,000 are currently selling in the mid 200,000s. Entry level home buyers are priced out and unable to compete with investors. The third point, in thinking about the impacts of flood in Sarpy County alone, 400 affordable units were lost. The majority of these were ownership. Homeownership provides permanent stability. House payments are consistent and don't increase as an individual makes more money or as their landlord chooses to make an increase. And there is no risk of having to move due to forces outside of the tenant's control. Sarpy County has the most expensive housing in our state. We need to add affordable homeownership as an option in this area so that folks receive the benefit of increased equity that truly ends the cycle of poverty. The fourth and last point, in a time when our country is waking up and realizing that racial injustice and housing injustice are inextricably intertwined, access to capital that is provided through homeownership is one very important solution that can change the trajectory of low income folks in our country. In closing, I know that part of NIFA's mission is affordable homeownership. So I know you understand this. As such, I hope you will consider withholding some of these precious dollars from the rental light tech pool and reserving it for homeownership, single family. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have anyone else who haven't had a chance to speak yet that would like to speak before we go through our? Okay. Chris, did you have any comments you'd like to add?
Yeah, real quick. I, uh, just one more paragraph to finish up. In regard to developmental conjunction with non-light tech housing opportunities. First of all, these are not my comments, but in relation to what Fred and Kathy both said, you know, for us to be able to develop near or in conjunction with or to actually do market rate projects and come up with the capital and funding that's required to do that. One of the issues that's making it difficult and it has been, and I have parked on this for a while, is our continued requirement to defer 25% of our developer fee. That is capital that's cash, that's operating money, that's leverage that developers can use, that's currently stuck in projects for a period of time. And again, no other state makes that requirement. You know, we're, we're being told that we need to have skin in the game when our syndicators are requiring a $5 million balance sheet and a million dollars in liquidity. So we need to kind of work together on that. And back to the, not the development with, uh, market rate opportunities, it's not reasonable to assume that new market rate housing development is occurring at the same pace in our rural communities, such as Order St. Paul. It isn't in the larger communities of Grand Island, Carney or Fremont, let alone Omaha or Lincoln. You can encourage development near newly constructed market rate properties. But the reality is you're directing where those projects are going to be built in the future. In summary, NIFA's attempt to add additional points to incentivize non-metro development using the high opportunity scoring concept similar to what you're doing in the metro locations is great in theory, but it's extremely unrealistic in practice. Non-metro site locations are being driven by multiple scoring opportunities that already exist. We follow the proposed new scoring additions that list of fundable communities is reduced even further. We're now going to see most of the non-metro wards go to communities with populations between 5 and 15,000. There's a handful of smaller communities between three and five that will score well enough to be funded. However, that list is going to be pretty much identical to the communities that have been funded over the last five years in the light tech program. That is all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Roger, anything additional?
I'll just read one thing. Well, no, I'll, I'll.
Okay. Kathy?
Yeah. So, uh, just by way of housekeeping, I would like comments that I made at the previous public hearing to be incorporated at, uh, for this one as well. And you have a copy of that on file. I'm sure. Um, a couple of housekeeping, uh, sort of housekeeping issues. Amanda, first of all, I, I love what you do and what your organization does. So I'm not really trying to fight you on this, but what I, my, my, my comment, uh, here, um, is, uh, may be, may bring you joy. And that is that if NIFA doesn't separate out the DR, the added DR costs uh, for things like Davis Bacon, when you're calculating efficiencies in the tax credit program, no one's going to apply for VR funds. So that should make you happy in the, in the tax credit round. So, uh, that's one comment. Uh, DED gap funding, um, with, uh, use of Nebraska Affordable Housing Trust Funds. I talked with DED about this the other day. Um, there are certain times when federal sources of gap financing just don't work with tax credits. And so I'm asking that we include the possibility to use, uh, Nebraska trust funds with tax credits. And, um, only under DED designed criteria. And I think they're probably going to talk with you guys about that. There's one point in the.
They have.
Okay. There's one point in the underwriting criteria that has me a little bit, uh, I don't know what you do with it, but you have the ability to throw out applications where, uh, you have a greater than half million dollar gap. Since AHP awards aren't made until the end of the year, the timing is all off and there's, I can foresee a situation where you throw out an application and later an AHP application comes in and all of a sudden you're not, um, the gap is less than that 500,000. So, um, timing is important if you're considering that. And my last comment at the, uh, at the risk of, uh, making a bunch of people mad, I'm, my comment is that, uh, or my request is that when the QAP goes before the board, uh, of NIFA on December 10th, I would really like to see, uh, developers and other interested parties have the ability to speak during the discussion of the QAP, not just, um, in the public comments before the board meeting. We really have not had the opportunity in two years to sit with the board and discuss what's being done with the QAP. And there's only one developer voice in the board meetings. Um, and he doesn't have, you know, my bent is always towards, uh, outstate Nebraska, non-metro projects. He doesn't have much experience with, um, rural projects. So I think there is, uh, there are more perspectives that could be shared if we would be allowed to speak with the board during their Q, QAP discussions. Um, and I would go so far as to write that language into the QAP, uh, that we have an opportunity on an annual basis to meet with the board and discuss, uh, what their philosophies are and what we're seeing. And maybe then we can avoid having multiple drafts of all of this and, um, and having so much consternation over, uh, what's being put out. So that would be my recommendation.
Right. Anything additional?
Yes, ma'am. I'm happy again. Um, I would reiterate, I think it's important that, um, developers do have an opportunity to talk to the board and interact with the board about the development of the QAP. Because without developers, you're going to have any low income housing tax credit implication. You know, nobody's going to build. Who does it? We do. And so really to understand difficulties of development, I think is really important. And that takes the dialogue. And so to Kathy's point, I think that's well taken. Um, the point I want to make is sometimes the language and the metrics that are put in the QAP don't necessarily meet the, the intent or function of the priorities of the board that are being put out. And I particularly direct this comment to the metrics with regard to, um, working with the cities and I guess that's collaboration with the communities in the implementation of low income housing. As I look at the, the, uh, application and the points that are worded in there and the way it's, the language is in the, the specific, um, way that the points are described. I've been working with the city of Lincoln, under Lincoln's community, uh, low income housing, uh, tax credit, or not tax credit, but low income housing, uh, plan, which it implemented last year. I wouldn't get credit for that unless it is a CCRP, which I don't even know what that specific term means. Or it's a, a, um, special neighborhood under HUD, whatever they're called, which there's only one place that there are in, and that's Omaha. So the, the, if the point is to reward working with the city under a city's plan to implement affordable housing, the points need to be phrased that way. So when we come forward with, whether it's under a redevelopment plan so that uh, we have tax increment financing, but we have to do specific things under a redevelopment plan to put in the, the housing, that should count. Any specific plan working with a city should count in my book for the points. And that, the, the way the thing is phrased doesn't work that way. And so, uh, that's a particular, uh, grievance to us. And then the timing of doing all those things is incredible. And in that process, I really think it's important to allow and respect the fact that if we're trying to build out a neighborhood, as noted, uh, by the, uh, South Omaha concerns, we want to put market rate and affordable together. Yet you can't do that very well under the LIHTC program. You can't do, uh, build out a neighborhood of 600 units under, you know, that's got to be phased and all that kind of stuff. And that needs to be respected in the QAP and benefit under the points.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else have additional comment that you'd like to come back up again?
Over here.
Oh, sorry. Thomas, feel free. Yes, please.
He didn't want to either.
That's okay. Anyone can come up. We just like to have some organization in the beginning. So we're not just calling on Kathy Muntz or to kick it off.
Well, my comments, Thomas Judd's, and I got, I guess I represent kind of two entities here. One, the Lincoln Housing Authority. And the other is Little Self-Development Company. So what's been on my mind? And so this is kind of a different spin from what's been commented today. But what's been on my mind as I am getting closer to retirement age is how do we grow the next generation of developers in low income housing tax credit program? And I, it's been on my mind for a while and then I looked around the room and most of us, you know, we've been in this for a while. And so where are you to be getting involved in this and how do we foster that? And so could that be, how do you incentivize that? And I know Spark, um, has done a great job with collaborating with NBC. How do we, how do we build more of that? And so is that state, is it NIFA's help? And maybe you, you are doing that because I know Sarah, you were on one of the webinars that I participated in that. That's been on my mind a lot because I, I think we need to foster that, build that. And if that means sanitizing the developers, and I got to be a shout out here to Rob Woodling. I mean, I wouldn't be involved in this if it wasn't helping have somebody like Rob Woodling help me to get involved. And so I really appreciate that. And I want to make sure we look back and help others move forward. So that's my.
Thank you very much. Yeah, that's great.
Changed my mind very quickly.
No, that's, you could do that.
Thomas is thinking about. Mark Hanson, I'm a retired banker and I've been working with our local, uh, CFI, Community Development Resources to add housing. It's a pillar there. Thomas, Thomas is, uh, thinking about retirement and I am in retirement. So I've got more time to think about these issues. And I'm just making a very basic observation is what I heard today. And that is NIFA is trying to do a fair and efficient way to allocate tax credits for the scoring system. But all these communities have different needs. And in your, your aspirational or hopeful way to do this in a fair and efficient, because you're a public entity. You know, you're getting all this feedback how it doesn't work in outstate Nebraska. This won't work in Omaha or this won't work in Lincoln. Maybe that's been going on forever. Okay. We're, we're doing this resource. But we have to figure out a way to do it that is customizable to the communities in which the real goals are. And I don't have that answer today, but I think that's what the feedback and so forth that I'm hearing is. Boy, we got to customize this some way. So that we are working with communities to need the help and it maybe has to be more flexible rather than all this front end, do it like this. Cause that's, that's, uh, not custom manufacturing. That's assembly line stuff and it won't work. That's bottom line. So.
I, I have one more quick question. It actually was kind of a little bit of a follow up there. One thing that I, that I think we want to, you know, I, I agree with Fred. I think it's a good, good approach that we encourage the development of some, uh, market rate or at least some, um, some affordable homes in the communities in greater Nebraska. Um, I'm not sure that we always, and, and to mix, um, lower incomes with workforce incomes with higher incomes. I, I agree with all of that, but one thing that you need to understand in small communities, um, you know, Chris alluded to it. We have less than 3,000 people in central city. We only have two stop, stoplights. Everybody's sort of elbow to elbow, uh, with one another. And so whether you're building a tax credit project on this block and you go two blocks away, um, and do some infill, uh, market rate housing, I don't, you know, I think that still counts as mixing incomes in similar neighborhoods. Um, I don't think you have to have a brand new subdivision in order to, um, to accomplish what you're trying to accomplish. So to Mark's point, flexibility. So to Mark's point, flexibility, look to what the communities are wanting done and, and work with, you know, and work to try to accomplish the goals that you're, that you're setting forth. And you could do that without just specifying every measure along way.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any additional? Do anybody change their minds? I probably should have started a little bit with this earlier, but I got a little flustered when we didn't have our camera working properly. But a lot of this is how we got here. I wanted to give a little bit of background for those of you who haven't followed this every step of the way. We actually began this process quite some time ago and had our first whole public process, communication and everything. And had planned to have the QAP to the board and on the board agenda through the November board meeting. Or October, thanks. I'm jumping ahead. There's no, we are in November. Yeah, October board meeting. Before the October board meeting, there was some conversation amongst board members and that just indicated that perhaps this QAP, the QAP as we presented initially would not, needed some additional changes to really get to what the board's policies and objectives are. Which if you listen to the last board meeting, there was a lot of discussion about that. And then also there was, I mean, it had been said that there was concern regarding gubernatorial supports, the governor signing off on the QAP. So we, at the board meeting, were asked to go back. They really, they really spelled out exactly what the items are, the objectives they wanted us to follow. And then after that, we worked with Shannon Harner, our executive director, and she put together a list of different recommendations to try to achieve those goals. And then the board was presented those goals and they were able to give, or presented those tactics and they were able to give feedback before we drafted this and presented it to the public. So we now, again, we're here for public comment. So thank you all. We had a, had a, a little presentation on Monday. I'm just kind of going over some basics. But today, we appreciate your public comment. What will happen is we will go to, we will meet internally and with the staff of the Department of Economic Development, read all the written public comments, discuss and discuss that and then the comments received today. After that, we will work together to make any recommended changes based on the public comment we received. That will then go to our programs committee. And our programs committee will make recommendations, whether, we'll take a look at the public comment and then review our recommendations. And then ideally, this will be looked at at the December board meeting. What we do with the public comments is we will compile those together in a document and then also provide the responses to each individual item, each individual topic. So we work with DED to make sure those are all addressed. And we typically post those with the holiday. It's going to be a little tricky, but we will, we will post those following our meeting with the programs committee. So you'll have a good, I think about two weeks before the board meeting to review the documents, the final proposed documents.
Sarah, there were a lot of things as I read through the specifics of the application that maybe asked the question, how are they going to tell this? Or what, how are they going to score this? What, you know, what, what is what I do fit into this? And are there going to be any clarifications like that? Can there be?
Well, I, I think that there, I think that based on a lot of the comments that we've received, we will, I mean, we need to, we need to clarify some things, definitely. I mean, I, I can't say specific clarifications or items right now, but there was a lot of great public comment that we will, of course, review and respond to.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
In Iowa, they do that even after the QAP has been accepted and published. They'll on their webpage have an ongoing Q and A. So if someone emails you a question and you answer it, you can post it so that all the other developers can see it. If you want to take a look at that, sometimes that's helpful when there's big changes like those.
You've got some major communication tools that will be rolling out in the next, well, the next probably few months. That will be something very similar to that, that will, that will really allow open communication. So that's off topic, but thank you. Thank you very much, everyone, for taking the time out of your days to help, provide comments to help us update the QAP.
You anticipate any changes or delays in the timing of the dates, I mean, between the board approval and by the time it goes to the governor? Are, are we still sticking with March or?
We haven't made any, we haven't had any discussions on that. I mean, if that's.
Some of those changes will affect one application over another for developers.
If that's a concern, please, I mean, please feel free to, please feel free to add that. Shoot me an email, add that concern. Part of our timing is, it's very tricky because of our board meetings.
So whether or not March is going to stay, sorry.
Yeah, no, you're fine. But if you have specific concerns about that, please, you know, feel free to email and we'll add it to your public comment.
And if you're looking at timing, separate it so we can do a 4% happen and react if we don't get it. Or in the 9%.
Part, part, part of it. But you don't, you also don't understand how complicated it is for us to juggle the, juggle all of the deals at one time and only having board meetings every other month. It's super complicated, especially on the bond side, to get everything packed in the period we need to. Go ahead, Amanda.
I do have a concern about the timing of the CD BG DR. By the time March happens, that will have been three years. If money does get returned to DED to allocate it for single family homeownership, how much longer will that be? So the people are in need.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. And again, you can feel, you can feel free to follow up with additional written comment through the end of today. Thanks.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Oh, thank you.